Almost three hours from Burlington. He's going back tonight, would you believe?
It's just because of the snow tomorrow.
Snow tomorrow.
I was gonna stay, but I'll be driving home with snow tomorrow, so it's a real problem.
He's asked me to begin with the short prayer, and then we'll begin the process. He's gonna give an overview of what's going on in the diocese, and then we'll have a format of people who have to make a comment or ask a question, limited to two minutes. I haven't figured out how to do that on my phone yet, but I will look closely at my phone, so if it gets down to two-minute mark, I'll -- Ms. Murphy will take care of the two-minute marker. She's been going to the Diocese and Senate meetings, and they used to have a big...
Kathy, why don't you go up front then, so we can...I know you hate that, but...
You know Kathy Murphy, don't you? She is...she gets around. She's the chair of St. John's Parish Council, and she's director of faith formation here, and she's a member of the Senate, and she has a son that's in seminary.
And I work at the school.
And she works at the school. Other than that, she has nothing else to do. That'd be her number. Well, let's take a moment to focus on this evening and give thanks for our faith and the opportunity to share it and ask questions about it, and opportunity to really better understand who we are as Catholics in this wonderful diocese of Burlington. So, dear God, we ask you to help us tonight to be honest and open and forthright and be willing to listen to one another, and be careful and objective as we deal with the issues that face our church this time. Glory be to the Father and to the Son and to the Holy Spirit, as it was in the beginning, is now, and shall be, for world without end. Amen. And just for...Ryan has taken pictures for Cat TV for us, and the bishop has been mic'd, so if you're asking questions, we want you to be heard, so we'll have it on Cat TV and also our website. Is that right? Thanks, Ryan. So, bishop?
Thank you. This is the third meeting that I've had, and we had to reschedule the one in Orleans last week because of snow, and so that's the way it is in the winter in Vermont. But we've...we're not canceling them, we're just moving them. For example, the one in Rutland is going to be next Tuesday night instead of tomorrow night, so I want to continue to do that. And I've had some requests from other parts of the diocese to add, as we...another...some more town meetings if we go along, which I'm open to, but let's just see how these go. This is the third one, as I said, the...we've been...we averaged...we had 75 in St. Albans, the first one, on a snowy night, and then last Tuesday night, we had over 100 people in Essex, so that's pretty much what we're seeing here as well. We could have moved into the hall this afternoon, but I thought...I thought we'd get about 100, and I'm sorry that some of you are standing, but also, when you...it allows...when you...when you get a chance to make your comment or ask a question, you stand, say who you are, and then speak in a loud voice, and that's...in a small room like this, people can hear you, whereas if we were spread out in the hall, it gets a little lost, so hopefully. And if someone soft-spoken, I normally repeat what they said for the sake of cable television as well. The ground rules are, again, kind of keep your comments to two minutes. If you have a statement that's beyond that, I'm willing to take it, and just write your name on it, contact information, give it to me, I'll read it later on and get back to you. Kathy's gonna keep track, and just about two minutes, she'll kind of wave her arm, and I'll kind of just say, "It's okay, you're getting to the...you're at your two minutes, and can you begin to wrap it up?" So, we like to keep speeches a little bit down. Not that we're all gonna give speeches, but I didn't do the ground rules last week, and we had some speeches. So, I had to stop some people and say, "Okay, you know, you've been going on there for about five minutes, you know, we need to do that." The operative principle is respectful listening, which means that we speak our own mind, but we don't speak to persons. So, even if someone...if someone gets up and says something that we don't agree with, we might say, "I'd like to speak an opposite position to something that was said earlier," but we don't talk about the person who said it, okay? Or we don't attack people, so try and keep that that way, so we can have a civil conversation as much as is possible in our culture today. Let me offer three initial thoughts, and then I'll open it up. So, I'd like you to consider...so, get your...get your first question or your first comment ready for me, so...because usually when I say, "Okay, let's go," then there's like this long pause. So, if someone could be ready to be raised, like three or four, you raise your hands as a start, then I'll just pick at random, and we'll go there. I'll usually say, "This person," and then "this person," or something like that. First of all, this is coming out of the synod process, my town meetings. As you...some of you, most of you are aware, the diocesan synod's been going on for a year and a half, it's coming to a conclusion and moving out of the consultation kind of informative, principled area to when we promulgate a document, to then doing what needs to be done in order to move things along. The three principal folk I of the synod that have come out are evangelization, building vibrant parishes, and communication. So, that's gonna be our three priorities, besides the number-one priority, which is spreading the good news, preaching the salvation of Jesus Christ in the church, but then within that, evangelizing, bringing people to the faith, building strong parish communities so that when they come to the faith, they have a place that can nurture them and a place they can go, and then being able to communicate the message, both of what we believe and communicate the opportunities that people have to engage us. One of the communications points was that people felt that there wasn't enough two-way communication, that they were getting letters from me or, you know, videos, but they didn't have an opportunity to talk to me and to talk to the diocese, because there's some representatives of the diocese personnel here as well. And so, this is an opportunity to have that two-way engagement, to have a conversation that goes back and forth. The other thing that I've just worked out with my secretary is I'm going to be getting, on the fourth Monday of every month, in the afternoon, having office hours. I already have office hours, but these are public office hours. So, on Monday afternoons, the fourth Monday of every month, people can call my office and set up an appointment for half an hour, either online or just say, "I want to come and talk to the bishop." So, that's gonna be another means of communication. So, my secretary, my assistant, will say, "Can you tell me what you want to talk to him about?" So, that would be some question that might be raised. It's always good to know what...what I'm...because, well, for example, someone says, "I want to talk about finances," I'll say...she'll say, "Do you mind if the chief financial officer or one of the financial people is in the meeting as well?" Or they want to talk about Catholic schools, I'll say, "Do you mind if the superintendents are there as well?" So, I don't have to filter these things, they're actually in the room when the conversation takes place. So, that's what this is about. This is my hearing you, and I'm hearing a lot, and, you know, some of the stuff I'm hearing was very challenging, some of it's very complimentary, some of it's very instructive and very helpful in terms of...very creative and thinking about things differently. I will offer two things...uh, three things out of that. One is, initially, I want you to know that we have done a lot of work in the diocese of Burlington and all around the United States over the past 16 to 17 years to clean up Iraq when it comes to the abuse of children and to do everything that we can, humanly possible, to make sure this never happens again. And because of our position on zero tolerance, which means that any priest or any employee of the diocese who's found to have a substantial allegation of abuse of children to be proven or substantiated is removed from ministry. They no longer have any opportunity, they don't wear the collar, they don't have any opportunity to abuse children. The other thing that part of that zero tolerance means is that when we receive an allegation...an allegation means it's based on place, time, and opportunity. So, someone calls our people, we have a person, like a hotline, and he says, or she says, "This happened to me in 1975 at St. Dominic's Parish when I was at the parish school." Okay? So, all the...an allegation simply means we just simply check, was the priest assigned to that parish in 1975? Yes. And was there a parish school? Yes. So, place, time, and opportunity. So, that's just the allegation. So, that just means we start the investigation, and...but at that point, everything's turned over to the law enforcement now. We do not do any kind of an investigation ourselves. We turn it over to DCF if that's what it involves, if we turn it over to the state police, we turn it over to whoever needs to know, so they handle the investigation. And then, once they've finished their investigation, that's when we begin to do our own, to make the determination as to whether or not the guy or employee should continue in ministry. But I want you to know that there is probably not a safer organization...sadly, it took us a horrible situation that we had to do this, but we should have been doing it all along this. Probably not a safer organization for children in the state of Vermont than the Catholic Church in terms of us, anything. We have, since 2002, we have had one allegation, new, something post-2002, in which someone said, "A priest did this to me," and it was proven to be unsubstantiated. So, that's 16 years of clean slate. Now, please, I'm not bragging about that, but I'm just reassuring you that this is not the case anymore, that we don't allow this, we don't condone it, we don't facilitate it, it's immediately handled and dealt with in the way it should have been dealt with for years. The other thing...I was gonna say about that. Well, we'll leave it at that. The second thing is that there's ongoing investigations about past behaviors. So, there's the Attorney General's Task Force looking into some abuse allegations...or abuse allegations at St. Joseph's Orphanage up in Burlington. They're also looking at past cases of priests that predate 2002. They were continuing to work with the task force and doing everything that we can to make sure that we give them the cooperation that they desire, and there, they come into our office, and we hand over the files, and they read them, and they...they're doing everything they can, and that's just ongoing. The second thing is, I have a...I've put together a committee of laymen and laywomen, seven laymen and seven laywomen, who are volunteers, who are going through every priest's file that has any allegation in it whatsoever regarding the abuse of minors. That's 52 cases, 52 files. Some of them are this thick, some of them are this thick. And so, they're going through page by page, it's taking...they're taking their time, and they're going to make a recommendation to me and a report to me, which I will publish, that says, "These are the names that you should make public to people as having credible and substantiated allegations against them, and people should know our past history, we should unearth it so we may see the light of day." So, that's ongoing. The third thing that's come up a lot in our conversations is the question of the age of confirmation. I've heard that at...in both St. Albans and I heard in Essex, there were a couple of questions about it in Essex. People have some strong opinions on that. The thing is that I decided to move the age of confirmation back down to sixth grade. All right? Now, how was that decision made? There was a group that was put together, a committee that was put together, of priests, religious ed directors, and laymen and laywomen, who met for over a year and a half to look at the question of when we should...when we best serve the church by confirming our young people. And at the end of the year and a half, they were not able to come up with a recommendation. There were three different recommendations. We leave it where it is, we go even earlier, down to age seven and eight, like they're gonna have in New Hampshire in two years, and like they already have in the state of Maine. Both...that was a small number. The main number was that we should go back to grade six and seven. And that was based upon...that was based upon good information from surveys. There was a national survey undertaken of young people who have left the Catholic Church, and they interviewed these young people, close to 1,000, and they said, "Why did you leave the Catholic Church?" And then the other question is, "What can get you back?" But then, there was another...and one of the other questions, "When did you first start to think about leaving the church and losing your faith?" And they said, "Fifth and sixth grade." So, our children are being exposed to something in this fifth and sixth grade that is leading them to begin to question the existence of God even, or, "Why am I even going to church?" So, they're asking...they're dealing with questions now in fifth and sixth grade that you and I dealt with probably in ninth and 10th grade when we were in high school. I remember hearing my...my others around my age at that time saying, "Well, I don't believe in God," or, "I don't necessarily believe in the church," or whatever. They're just dealing with it at a much earlier age. And so, the feeling was that we have to address this at an earlier age. And the other thing is statistically, they're leaving our programs at an earlier age. They're not staying until high school anymore, so that if you...when you...every time you move it another year, you're losing children that we could possibly evangelize and catechize with their families. So, if we left it...when you leave it, when you...you see what I'm saying? If you say, "We're gonna do it at sixth grade," then maybe you have 50 kids. If you say, "We're gonna do it at seventh grade," you have 45 kids. You say, "We're gonna do it in eighth grade," you got 40 kids. So, by the time almost all of our programs get to the high school age, we've already lost a significant group between that sixth and that ninth grade. So, we want to be able to evangelize, catechize, feed and nourish the largest number of children that we can and their families, and we want to...we're also trying to work to set up a program that's post-confirmation. And the program's really focusing on confirmation as just one part of a step of missionary discipleship, that we were even thinking of doing confirmation maybe in the middle of the year, like...or even in the fall, with a series of programs that continue after confirmation, and the big push is, you know, like, if you're gonna be confirmed, you're also committing yourself to this and this in January, February, and March. You're committing yourself to be a lecturer, you're committing yourself to do these things in the church. So, the whole idea is an engagement that doesn't see confirmation as a stop-end, but as a beginning or a continuation of what they've received. It's a...it's an empowerment in the faith so that they may then lead on to the life of faith. Now, I know, I've heard, there are people in...all across the state who agree very much with what we're doing, there are others who don't agree with what we're doing, but I had to make a decision, and I settled on the majority. I was confirmed in sixth and seventh grade. Different time, different culture, but it seemed to work. Those of you...there are probably a lot of you who were confirmed in seventh, sixth, and seventh grade, it seemed to work for you. What's the difference? Cultural differences, obviously. But my parents also...if we can...one of the things I'd say is, once...it's only one little piece of the puzzle, but can we get the parents on board that says, encourage them and get them to say, "Confirmation's not an end in the sixth grade," but that they then say, "You know, just when you get confirmed in October, you're still going down to the church, and you're still being part of that church in all the things that they're doing there with the youth group and with the other faith formation groups that they're gonna continue. It's not a graduation. It's a...it's a beginning." So, that's...that's the reason why, you know, in two years, we're gonna go to grade six as the actual time. Now, if a parish comes to me and says, as I said to Father Weisman, if a parish comes and said, "We'd rather do it at this age," I'd be open to that as well. I'm not completely...if they have a good reason for it, I'd say, "Okay." If you think you're...if that's what your parish community wants to do, and that's what the parents want to do, then I'm open to that. So, having said that, I know I didn't cover enough of all those three things and other things, but let me open it up to any of you. Please, just raise your hand, I'll point to you, stand. Again, say who you are, where you're from, and then your question or comment that you'd like to make. Right in the back, sir.
Good evening, bishop. My name's Bill Fisk, I'm from St. John and Baptist Parish. And first, I'd like to thank you for being here this evening. It's really refreshing to have the bishop here. The last time I saw a bishop was when my kids were confirmed in this church a while ago, now they're both in their 40s. I'd like to share some comments for you. I think my comments are more focused on your role as a member of the USCCP than specifically as a bishop of the diocese, but I think there's some overlap. Principally, my concern is about the governance structure of the church, and I feel that it's effectively a monarchy that's really wrapped in clericalism, and there's not, to use your term, adequate communication in the rest of us and the hierarchy. And I would welcome an opportunity to see meaningful roles for men and women in communications and governance of the church. I know we moved from where we were once, but I think we've got a long way to go. The second observation I have is that we are focusing on clerical abuse of children, which is a terrible thing, but there's also been a major problem with the people who are running the show, if you will, bishops of this country. I don't think they were prepared to address adequately the things that happened. We know that there were apparently individuals, bishops, who were involved in activities in which they shouldn't be involved, and I think that that's a concern that goes back to my original comment. We need more openness, we need roles for men and women in the church. And the last thing I reflect on here is that the spiritual and financial cost of this scandal and all its manifestations is really horrendous when I think about it, you know, and not...what it's done to the individual involved, the students or the young people involved. Secondly, what it's done to the confidence of many people who are still going to church but really have shaken their confidence in them. Lastly, the financial cost. So, I'd ask you, as a...delegate is the proper word, to...as a member of the USCCP, and I believe you're the communications chair of that organization?
Not anymore. My term ended, I had three-year term.
Okay, great. Well, I'd ask you to participate and deal with that question. How can governance be more open in the church? Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thanks. I...I try and deal with...Prince, I hear you. I focus on what I can control, and the first place I can start is with myself, and so I think I try and strive as much as in my own imperfections and being from Boston and being a raging Boston sports fan. I try and focus on being holy in my life, which means trying to be of God, trying to be of...trying to be authentic in word and deed. And I think the fault of all of these sins that you've mentioned is...was a failure to live a holy life and to be authentic ministers and people that...to what were called as priests and ministers of the church. That's the starting point. I can say exactly what you say, and I agree with you wholeheartedly, that the future of the church rests in a willingness to set aside clericalism, which privileges a certain group of people over others. Now, let me...that's the reason why I use that word. Right now, it reflects...it's clericalism as those who wear the collar, who are privileged over others and giving undue regard, and the rules didn't necessarily play to them, and they also, you know, took advantage of certain people's respect and belief that priests were gonna behave a certain way and all that. But clericalism can also be found in...as undue privilege within a church, with any institution. So, I think we, as a community, we have to be on guard for just that in general, so that we could, for example, we could end up with a whole new kind of level of clericalism that's around a professional group of laymen and laywomen who are running the church. You see what I'm saying? It can fall...it's not...it's not something that's restricted to the collar. You see it in any...anybody who's an organizational specialist will tell you, that kind of deference to a particular coterie within a community or a company can happen, regardless of whether you're...it's a faith community. Unfortunately, when it's a faith community, it can hurt on two levels. One is, and I'm glad you said, the spiritual fallout as well as the financial fallout, because the wreckage of the finances is very easy for us to compute, we can look at numbers. But the wreckage of the spiritual fallout from children and families that were abused is something that you can't easily quantify. But when you sit across from victims who tell you, "I...my mother's...I'm 70 years old, and my mother's still alive, but I haven't been to church since this happened to me, and she's never understood why, because I've never told her, and I can't tell her, because it'll kill her, because she loves the church. But I won't..."But she can't understand why I won't go to funerals, because the guy said, "Because when I walk into a church, I get ill." He says, "That's why I can't go." But I can't tell her that, and she's...and we've been estranged, that part of our lives has been estrangement from us. That's personal wreckage as well as spiritual wreckage, but there are so many times that people have...because they were abused, they...even if they wanted to come back to the church, they find it hard because of what happened to them, and so that's fallout. So, we talk about evangelization and want to bring people back. Now, I will say, just in a positive thing, a couple of the people that I've seen here over the past four years, I've looked out at a church, and I've seen them back, you know, so they were victims, but they're back, so that's a...that's a positive thing. I'm gonna long answer your question. I do believe, yes, that there needs to be more lay involvement, more lay oversight, that bishops cannot be policing ourselves, and I absolutely stood behind that. When the discussion was up as to whether or not to ask the Holy Father to release any files having to do with Cardinal McCarrick scandal, I was one of the ones that said, "Yes," even though there was a floor fight over it at the time because of another whole thing altogether. But I agree with you, I think everything you said, I say yes, yes to it, absolutely. I think clericalism was one of the largest factors besides the lack of holiness for what happened in the '60s and '70s, especially involving the abuse of children, because that's when the vast majority of abuse took place. Right over here, sir.
My name is Jerry McMurray, bishop, and I want to thank you for coming down here. It's sort of part of your job, and I commend you for doing it. My concern is not just...
Can you speak louder?
My concern is not with just abuse of minors, but with abuse of seminarians and young priests, as we saw in the former Cardinal McCarrick scandal. What steps would you take to protect our seminarians and young priests from any such predation as some people experienced with the former Cardinal McCarrick? And what about seminaries that we're gonna send our young men to? Are you gonna make sure that they are safe places for them, that this kind of terrible, terrible thing doesn't occur to them?
Right. The question was, what am I doing as a bishop to ensure that our seminarians, who are in vulnerable positions because of positions of power and everything alike, are not preyed upon in the way that Cardinal McCarrick preyed upon seminarians and then, as it turns out, teenage boys when he was a priest? I think...well, first of all, I was in seminary formation...I was a seminary professor for 12 years, and I lived in St. John's Seminary in Brighton. And during that time, I never witnessed a faculty member doing anything untoward towards any of our seminary students or placing them in a position where they were abusing that position of authority. But that was from 1994 to 2006. I haven't been there since 2006. I think part of it is, again, the vast majority of seminaries are doing good work, and there's no...none of this going on as far as I can see, but there are the sad cases involving it. I will tell you that when I was in studies in Rome in 1990, I had a classmate from the diocese of Metuchen, which was there where then Bishop McCarrick was assigned. And back then, he was telling me, because I was ordained a priest, I was pursuing my doctoral studies, he would say, "Everybody knows that the bishop has his nephews," and he told me about the beach house and everything else. This is 1990, '91, okay? And it was well-known, and so I was...when certain bishops and cardinals got up recently and said, "Well, this is all news to us," I was saying, "Oh, liar, liar, pants on." Because in this day and age, you can't...
No.
You can't get away with it, right? And it was allowed to happen because it was power, issues of power. I think we have to be vigilant in our seminary formations to make sure that our men are not taken advantage of, but also that as a bishop and as a vocation director, we've already talked to all of our men, and we've said to them, "Do not be afraid to ever come and tell us if someone does these things to you. We will believe you." And I think every seminary has to set up some kind of an apparatus specifically for that, a safe place where if this behavior does happen, the men and women students who do attend seminaries know that that's the person or place that they can go to say, "I have a concern about how this is happening here." So, I will say that our...right now, our guys, we only have one more guy at St. John's Seminary in Brighton, but our men right now are going to Mount St. Joseph's, which is outside of Baltimore, and that's got a pretty...for now, it's got a clean record, but I'm worried about it. I want also to let parents of the students know that we will do everything we can to make sure that their son, who, while being an adult over the age of 18, is not what they...is what they call a vulnerable adult because of the positions of power and all that, that we will do everything we can to protect him.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. In the back there, and then we'll come over here.
I'm Margaret Pendergast from this parish, and for a long time, I have had a...I don't want to say omission, but I've certainly had a desire to ask the Catholic Church, would would some, I was also married to an ex-seminarian, Holy Cross. Would some of these problems, quote-unquote, that we seem to have had for a long term be somehow alleviated by having married priests? Or at least allowing young men who may consider going into the priesthood the option of becoming married? I also worked in the early sixties in the Andes in Peru, in which there were a number of young seminarians and priests. And let me tell you, as a 22-year-old, 10,000 feet up in the Andes, those young men needed to be married. That's just my personal--
When I was in seminary, my sisters would come to visit. They would radar around the chapel, and then they'd say, "Oh, that's a waste." So they used to refer to one of my friends as, "Father, what a waste." He's still priests. I think-- I am completely open to the idea of a married clergy. We already have a married clergy in the Latin Rite, in the Latin Rite Church, the Catholic Church. We have men who are coming in from the Anglican Communion and from the Episcopal Communion who are already married, who are given the option, what they call the Anglican exception or whatever. So the idea of married or unmarried clergy is not sacramental nor is it theological. It's a tradition, and it's a practice, okay? So I have no problem with that. I would have a problem with any poor woman that would want to marry me or most of the priests I know. I feel bad for them.
Probably should talk to your mother.
Yeah, my mother would talk to you. But I would offer, if we're going to do it, it shouldn't be because we want to fix a problem. It's because we want to do the right thing. So in other words, I wouldn't want to do it just because it would maybe prevent what happens from happening again. I'd want to do, and that's a good thing too, though. But I would want to do it because it's what we should be doing as a community, that we should be embracing the idea of an ordained clergy that can serve the community as much and as well as the celibate communion. So if the Pope tomorrow said that in the Latin Rite we are going to allow for a married clergy from this point forward, it would basically be men who are married before they are ordained, which is the practice. So any of us who are already ordained, we're done, so. We don't think we're going to start doing dating connections or anything. But I will say this. You have to recognize the demand financially it's going to put on you. Because the salary of priests is under $30,000 a year. Plus their benefits, it's about 50, when you put benefits and salaries and housing, it's about $50,000 a year per purse is what it costs parishes for a priest, okay? $50,000 a year is not going to be enough for a father with two kids and a wife and college tuition coming forward and everything else. So you're going to have to think about an increased giving and all that that entails. And you're going to have to also be willing to deal with the question of the priest's wife or father's wife, and how are you going to relate to that as well? Right here, I saw--
My name? Okay, Eleanor Nerno. I am from Christo Sacred Parish in Manchester, but originally from St. Margaret Mary, although I'm only--
Was that Danbury or Arlington?
Arlington, okay. My question has to do not so much with the Universal Church or even the Diocesan Church but the individual parish, because that is where most of us have our relationship with God and with the other people of the church. And I'd like to address some of the concerns we have about communication and the lack of communication at the parish level. I don't know, are we supposed to have a parish council in every parish? And do we? That's one of my questions. Do we expect that communication is not just a one-way street, but is a two-way street at the local level? At the same time, does evangelization end with our confirmation program? Or does it go for the rest of our lives? And why don't we see more adult education programs in Christianity, more Bible study groups, more Days of Recollection, the Old Parish Mission, things like that? Because this is a way for all of us to have a vibrant Christianity. That's it.
That one-minute question could be, it would probably take a half an hour for me to unpack. I think, as a bishop, I'm only as successful being a bishop, first of all, as long as my priests are doing their jobs and doing it well. So my first focus in terms of being a good pastor is being a good pastor to priests. And then to all of you as well, of course. But they're like the middle managers that I'm going to use. I'm using a level of organizational chart. But they're the ones who are out there working in your parishes and being with you, right? And we can have the greatest plans, and I can be the most eloquent bishop, and I can get it, suppose, like what I'm saying to you. But if you don't have priests who are willing to get on board with that, or tired, or just kind of playing out the string, then that's like a big plug. It's just going to stop there. Now, you also have other priests who are really committed to it as well. And those parishes tend to thrive, and they tend to, they have parish councils, they have parish finance councils, they have parish pastoral council. They're doing things to promote education, like you said, so that is, so adult education. They have vibrant parishes in many ways, and they're parishes that we would say are thriving and kind of good parishes. There are other guys, and I'm not going to mention any names, I'm not going to mention parishes, but there are other guys that I'm well aware that we send communications to them, we have people go down and try and run programs. We'll have, we have a director of catechesis, we have a director of youth ministry, we have a director of worship. And they'll go down to some of these places and they'll say, "Hey, we want to come down and talk to you people." And they'll say, "No." Priests will just say, "No." And then I have to call the priest up and, you know, and almost force him to do what he does. So I'm doing everything that I can to get everybody on board. What was that, for those of you who were, that book? Something Success, it was a book. But anyways, it's called, the thing is, "Who's on the bus?" Who's on the bus? Something, the question was, "The road to success" or something like that. The question is, "Who's on the bus?" If a person's not on the bus, can you get them on the bus? And if they're really just getting in the way, then maybe you got to move. And another thing I'll say statistically is, when people leave the church, if they do it because they're just bored or because it isn't worthwhile to go to church, they just kind of fall away out of the habit, and they just kind of leave. Those people are easy, it's like easy statistically to get them back. But if they leave for a reason, it's really hard to get them back. If they called up directory and they said, "They want to talk to a priest about having their baby baptized," and the priest said, "Well, you members of this parish?" "Nope, then we won't do it." Thank, you know? And I'm not just blaming the priest, because also, a lot of people who are on parish staff can do the same thing, you know? So I think, the thing is, I'm more concerned about people on our staffs who are giving people reasons to leave, and they're legitimate reasons. And I'm doing everything I can. But, and there are really good guys out there, and they're doing a lot of good work. But then this, I was away last year on a workshop on Episcopal leadership. And they talked about staffing, and they said, "We want you to look, take out..." We were asked to bring the list of our clergy with us. And they said, at the thing, they said, "All right, here's three groupings. Green light, yellow light, red light. And we want you to group your priests accordingly." And you can guess what the criteria was for green, yellow, and red. And suffice it to say, I was glad there weren't too many in the red, but there are. The yellow are people you think, "Okay, they just need to move up, you got to coach them up," they said, "Coach them up." So that's what, but it's, I hear you. I mean, you're only as good as the people that work with you and for you in these matters. And that's why we're doing everything we can to develop vibrant parishes and good communication. You know, we have a great communication staff. The Catholic Magazine won a national award through the Catholic Press Association for being the best magazine in the country, Catholic Magazine. Small distribution, we didn't meet America Magazine. But at our level of distribution, we were like number one, right? And we have our inland sea that goes in our bulletin, right? I hope mostly you see that. There are parishes that don't put the inland sea in their bulletin there. They said they can't be bothered, you know, ago. We have, our Facebook page won a number one for, one of first place in the Catholic Press Association for being the best Facebook page, you know? We have digital media, we have videos online, we have all these things. But there's these places that are just black holes, where you send all this stuff to, and I go there and people say, "But we didn't hear anything about this." And it's a real struggle for me, but I think, but I also want to, I also want to-- let me just say once again, the men in this room right now and others are doing phenomenal jobs. It's the ones that, the black holes of communications and everything else that are the toughest to deal with, that drive people away, and that's the sadness here. There was a gentleman with the red shirt, and then I'll go to the woman with the white and then the green.
Thank you very much for coming down, Bishop. My name is Bob Covellio. I've been a longtime Knight of Columbus, fourth-degree member. And every time you're in town, I'm in Florida, sorry. I will be in your honor guard sometime. Down, just come after me first. But other than that, I really want to thank you for coming down. I was a convert in the middle seventies. I was a good prolific Protestant, married a Catholic girl. And Father Jerry Bombardier, who was from up in the Burlington area, converted me, family friend. And I'm not a bit sorry. Over these forty-some years, I've got six grandchildren, they're all good practicing Catholics. And in Florida, they do this confirmation at the sixth grade level. And I think it's a very smart move to get them early. But my concerns is that in the short term, there's lots of efforts and pulling of guardrails for what the church is supposed to do. Go easy this way, go easy that way. Guardrails are a good thing. This church is not the church that I left. Still has their guardrails, and it lets you know, you might not like what the church says, but that's the way it should be. And I appreciate that, and I wanted you to know that I appreciate traditional church teachings. I don't appreciate what some of the nonsense that went on. It goes on all across society. It's not just a Catholic thing. Went on in the Methodist church that I went in, goes on in the schools, goes on everywhere. I appreciate the lack of, or the transparency that our church is dealing with, the issue. So enough about that, there'll be other people who'll talk about it. But my concern, I wasn't even going to come today, I was going to go skiing tonight. But I did have a comment based on what happened at the March of Life last week.
The bouncer just-- But go ahead with your comment.
One comment.
I thought it was terrible what happened to that young child at the March of Life, being protested with a drum next to his ear. That if I had a factory, OSHA would have fined me if I had a machine that close to a--
Oh, you mean like a parent was marching with a drum and it was right next to their kid?
No, Washington DC--
Oh, Washington DC.
And the automatic reaction of the national press to persecute Catholic kids. The press is not our friend. And the church came out against the children. So we got your back. I'd appreciate it that you always take the first blush at our children, which I think are some of the best kids around, that you're always backing them.
We had 75 young people and chaperones go down for the "life is precious" thing. And they had a phenomenal time down there. And they went, they were on the march, and then they went to a soup kitchen, they went to a senior housing, they went to the Holocaust Museum, they went to the St. John Paul II Museum. We were trying to give them, say that we're not just anti-abortion, we're pro-life. So we're pro-life, which means that we take care of all the things we do. I agree with you that the initial response to the Covington student situation was not handled well, and we need to learn from that. And I would have handled it differently here in Burlington, and I'm not just talking back and looking, I'm not-- but that comes out of my background. I was the spokesperson for the Archdiocese of Boston for five years. And I've been involved in communications on the national level. And I know that you have to wait. When something starts to happen and story starts to break, you have to wait and watch what it is, because it's going to change as it evolves. So don't make an immediate statement other than, "We're aware of it, and we're going to look into it, and we will get through a statement," and that's it. Unfortunately, Covington Diocese didn't do that. So I hear you. The guardrails. Let me, I look at it two ways. If we're going to do it, the great deposit of the church's authentic teaching on matters of faith and morals is there. It's nothing that I can't, as a bishop, I embrace it, I own it, I try and live it. It's there. It's not something that the guardrails move on widely, you know? It's how, but I would also say that the guardrails of the church, I think, are very rife, without necessarily having retained this, okay? It's all a matter in which you explain it, it's all a matter in which you love it, live it, it's all a matter of, what they say, the hermeneutic, you translate it, okay? Pope Francis talks about this beautiful theology of accompaniment. And he encourages us as priests and everyone else to embrace it. He says that we're all accompanying each other on a journey towards holiness and salvation that's directed and guided by these rules of faith and morals of the church. And that none of us completely lives and embraces these things because we're imperfect human beings. But they are perfect in themselves, and they help us find our way as Catholics, okay? So my, the way, as someone who loves Pope Francis and loves Benedict, loves Benedict, and loved John Paul II, because it's, they're the Holy Father elected by consistory and the power of the Holy Spirit, love the church. Francis encourages us, especially ministers, to speak to people when they come to us and they want to be part of our faith or they're struggling with our faith, embrace where God is already working in them, how God has already graced in them. You know, so if someone comes and says, "I'd love, I want to be part of the faith, but I'm struggling with this church teaching," I'd say, "Okay, but look at all the other parts of what we believe that you're living. Look at all the other ways in God's grace is working in your life." A priest is meeting with a couple who, the husband wants to become a Catholic, but he's been divorced and he needs an annulment, and he's just trying to struggle with that. And they say, but basically, he doesn't say, "Well, we can't even talk about initiation until you take care of that marriage." That's another one of those black holes type things, right? But instead, you say, "Okay, your marriage is irregular, fine. But look at how God's already working in your marriage, how you love each other, you care for each other, there's already grace there, and we can build upon it." And his whole point is that in this grace-filled church, that's a very large umbrella that we call Catholic, can we walk with each other, not to leave each other where we are, right? It's not like, "I'm okay, you're okay, stay there." It's, can we encourage each other to move along the great path of salvation and see the church's teaching as those guidelines and those things towards which we strive? None of us is ever going to fulfill perfect charity. But that doesn't mean we don't give up. And that's my little honally, but that, I think, touches upon what you're saying. We don't have to change the immutable teaching of the church on faith and morals so much as we have to change our hearts and try and embrace as best we can. But we don't throw people, it's not, it's not, you don't get a passing grade or a failing grade until the end of time, and that's before the Lord. So that's the way I look at it. So I saw a woman, the white shirt here, and then there's someone, wait, the picture, okay?
Hi, I'm--
And then I'll come over here.
I'm Michael Williams. I was of Our Lady of Wors, and now I'm a member of this church. Grateful to have you here, grateful for you on your way home and what you're hoping to do. I guess my, this is way off of everything everybody's said, but it really is a part of my heart, and I'm very concerned about evangelizing with the Divine Mercy Sunday. That is very dear to me. And I don't feel that enough people, including, you know, priests, know really what that entails and how perfect and beautiful it is and how many people that are not going to church. It's the perfect opportunity to have them come back, the most perfect opportunity. I mean, it's a day of renewal, of becoming fresh and clean, almost like, I don't know. Anyways, to me, it's perfect. And I just wonder if we could somehow maybe get that back into the church.
Sure. I think devotions like the Divine Mercy and the Rosary and all the beautiful other devotions of the church offer so much to us because they're so democratic. They don't require a collar. Anyone can pray the Divine Mercies, you don't need a priest or-- You don't need a priest or deacon. And a group of people can just come together to pray the devotions. You don't need a priest or deacon. So I, and the devotions are wonderful because they lead us deeply into the life of the saints, they lead us deeply into the love of Jesus that's in the Divine Mercy, but then they also lead us to the sacraments. They're not intended to replace, but they lead us to the sacraments. So my encouragement would be to, if, when you have devotions and you want to foster them, take the opportunity to be, to encourage people to say, I'm sure that Father Hugh or Father...
Father.
I was gonna say Bill, but it's not Bill. Not Bill, sounds like Rob.
You're a red bubble.
You said, if you said any, I'd like to have an opportunity on, especially on Divine Mercy Sunday, to get a group of laypeople together. We'd like to, two o'clock in the afternoon, if that can work on the schedule, we'd like to offer the Divine Mercy ourselves. It doesn't, I mean, it doesn't require me to do it or anyone else.
Or the mass. Not you personally, but the mass, it's the whole.
That, well, that would be, the problem with, I wouldn't say problem. One part of the issue with that would be, how many masses does the priest say during the Sunday? Because he can only say up to two normally and three if necessary. So if you're adding a third mass or fourth mass, it's a little bit of a problem. But I would also say, you know, Divine Mercy's lovely. I don't pray it, and I'm being, so I'm being honest with you, because I pray the rosary. And it's very similar to the rosary for me, and that's where my heart is in terms of devotion. It's not because I don't see the value in the Divine Mercy, but I always say to myself, "Well, if I'm gonna pray the Divine Mercy, I'm gonna pray the rosary." Yeah.
I'm just saying for that one particular Sunday of the year and how it's sort of cleavage, I don't know, cleavage weight, it just brings you.
Okay.
That's part of it.
You know, I think part of it might also be that you're so close to the shrine for that Sunday, for that Sunday. So that's, a lot of the people who would participate in something here locally were already going there. So, I mean, I'm not trying to make excuses, but I think it would be something to talk about, but it's kind of, I'm going a little, I'm micromanaging a parish now. Yes, you're right, Father, I'll stop, okay. Right here in the green, and then let me come over this side so I'm not.
My name is Julie Hurson. I just wanted to ask, you mentioned that evangelism was gonna, is a part of the Senate, one of the three major components. And in thinking about evangelism, in my, in my view, it's a way of bringing people back who are no longer members of.
Or people who have never been members.
True.
Yeah.
But I'm wondering if you're considering any efforts toward two, I think, very large communities who feel unwanted in the Catholic Church, and those would be to group them divorced Catholics and the LGBTQ community.
Sure. That's where I, that to me is why the concept of the wide spectrum of accompaniment is so important, that when you encounter people who are in second marriages after divorce, or you encounter people who are LGBTQIA, or people who have children who are LGBTQ, or grandchildren, or siblings, that you would first welcome and always say, "All are welcome to be a part of what we believe." This is a part of what we hold as a church. And then I would always encourage people to begin to, I've always said, "Have you ever looked at the church's full teaching on the matters of sexuality? Have you ever looked at maybe the church's full teaching on the matters of marriage or something like that?" That's down the road. I think, I think we, so we're so defined by what we, by what we, by our nose and what we're, and who's, and what we're not rather than what we are. So I, I hear you. Yes, I'm very much aware that those are neuralgic, I mean, very basic gut issues with a lot of people, and, but they're part of what we hold in terms of our fulness of teaching on the matter. But I don't see it necessarily as a, as a, as a starting place where you just say, "Well, because you don't pass this test, you can't even come into the room to start." Because I don't know if that's helpful to you.
Well, I, I guess, thank you for that, but what is the church going to do about that? I mean, if you're going to evangelize to try to bring people back or bring people in, are there steps toward those two groups that you plan to?
Yeah. They're two different sets of issues in the sense of how you deal with them pastorally, but I think the LGBTQ issue is one that's going to continue to be very difficult for us because we are in a, in a culture that is so tolerant and so highly sexualized that it's very difficult to have any kind of a conversation that, about this that can, in a way that the church's position on these matters will begin to be hurt. For example, the question for me the most is, among the many questions that we've never really talked about or doesn't get addressed is, when we talk about equal marriage rights between a man and a man or a woman and a woman, we forget that the church's understanding of marriage is that it's a sacrament, and that the, one of the, one of the fundamental parts of that sacrament is the natural generation and the natural symbolism of a man and a woman, and that, that naturally symbolizes God's creative action. So the issue is kind of a, when you do that, is how does this, how does a man-man or woman-woman relationship fit into this? Because when you look at it, you don't naturally say, "Okay, they can have children. They can adopt children." Or they can use, or woman-woman, as a couple, they can perhaps adopt, or I'm not gonna go into biology of it. But you know, I'm seeing, it's not, the sacramental understanding of marriage is something that's very important to understand the church's position in these matters as well as theological issues regarding the use of the human gift of sexuality. I, I hear you. I'm saying that a lot, but I'm, but I'm very sensitive to that as having nieces and nephews, well, a niece who's a lesbian, and, and she's, she and I get along fine, but she doesn't, of course, come to church, and she has strong opinions on these matters. So yes, I'm very sensitive to that. Over here, can I see hands in the back?
My name is Bethan McGinnis from Christ Our Savior Parish in Manchester. I had eight years of Catholic education in grade school, Catholic university, over forty years of firstista. But I started having hierarchy problems in the seventies with John Pearl in Philadelphia, who kind of promulgated the doctrine of disposable souls. Parish had a problem, he didn't want to hear from. Certainly didn't want to have to solve it because the church never makes mistakes. I have had tremendous difficulty, and you are a good communicator, both in person and on the web, and I'm hoping that you will not only listen to us, but you will hear and digest what we have to say. Our parish priests have been carrying a terrible burden ever since this pedophilia scandal has broken. The innocent priests have had to deal with suspicion and other problems that they never had to deal with before, and are often very reluctant to involve themselves with children out of fear. Now it's spread to the bishops and the cardinals. We laity have not forgotten that Bernard Law, who never apologized to the people of Boston, set a publicly televised mass in Rome when John Paul II died. Our hierarchy is not responsible to us. I have served my parishes, even military parishes, in extraordinary ways since early grade school, but I have had to consider that I serve God, not a bureaucracy, because I can't relate to bureaucracy, and bureaucracy doesn't want to hear from me most of the time. My relationship is I now, preacher creator, and if the church facilitates that and adds to it, wonderful. I will not absent myself from the sacraments. They are Jesus Christ's gifts to me, and so I remain active in the Catholic Church. But at tremendous expense and tremendous amounts of time, I raised four children, Catholic educated. Only one of the four is still practicing Catholic. They are disgusted with what has happened in this church. They call it a corrupt church. And part of that corruption is not so much what happened, although any child, even a single one being damaged is inexcusable, but the cover-up by people who should have known better.
Right.
They just cannot deal with that as parents. And so I have three children and six grandchildren who are not getting the Christian faith that they were exposed to as children. And I, I can't tell you how much that hurts.
Well, I want to thank you for your faithful witness right now in speaking honestly and also in staying with the church and the sacraments, as you said, even though you found it very difficult and hard. There are, there is a lot of fallout from the abuse crisis. The, the thing is, that's, that is part of our evangelization work right now, is that when you ask young people right now who have left the church, why they left the church, that question of the abuse crisis is way down on the reasons. I'm not, I'm not in any way dismissing what you said, but just to give you a sense of the depth of what we're dealing with, wouldn't it, to me, I wish it was so, I wish it was easy, not easy, I wish I could say, "Okay, this all happened because of the abuse crisis." It's so much more, as you know, as to why people have left the church or don't come to church anymore. The, the question, that, the issues that you raise are this. Back in two thousand two, or one of the issues, back in two thousand two, when this all broke with the story of the globe and that it became national and then international, and we discovered the depth of sin and broke, and awful criminality that was going on in the church, the bishops of the United States took care of one thing, and that was to make sure that any priest or deacon or lay, or lay employee who abused children was removed, right? I said zero tolerance, right? And that these guys, all of these guys are held accountable. I was a priest in two thousand two, two thousand eleven. I was under that, under that, under that policy of zero tolerance. My, my personal records were gone through, like every priest in the United States was gone through. I was just as, I was just as open as anyone else to an allegation, and I would have been held under the, under the policies of how that allegation was treated. And I was, I can understand very clearly, and because I lived it, the fear of my brother priests and deacons as to what could happen to us, okay? One group who did not have to live under that fear were the bishops, for the most part. The other thing is, when we, like I said, we've put these policies in place, we have this policy of zero tolerance, we have these great education programs for children, for adult volunteers, we do criminal background checks, we do all these things, right? We took care of that. But the one thing that people were still angry about was the point that you made about people like Cardinal Law, who felt, you felt rightly, were never held accountable for their malpractice in reappointing and moving these guys around. Not necessarily that they were abusers themselves, that they were abusers in the sense that they allowed the abuse to go on because of decisions that they made, and that they were never held accountable, okay? When the Theodore McCarrick story broke earlier this year, that's the point that came forward. That's what finally interrupted, people said, "See? Once again, the bishops were never held accountable." And so I think we, as bishops, need to be held to the same level of responsibility, not responsibility, of, of having our files gone through, I've said it over and over again, anybody, anybody can go through, any group of investigators are welcome to go through my priest files, my files when I was a bishop in Indiana, my files here. It's, I should be under the same scrutiny as a priest, as a priest, just because, not as a bishop, and that I should be held accountable to the same level as all, as a priest is as well. There should be no different rules. And I also, I also think we're not gonna get over this until every bishop who, for the right, for, I think, whatever reason, who put men back into priests or back into places to abuse children, even though they knew the potential was there, every bishop who did that, until they're out of, until they're no longer a bishop, we're gonna be carrying this. I think, I think, you know, I think there needs to be more resignations, and I really believe that, and I've said that publicly in other places too, and I, but that I'm not, but I can only take care of myself. So you want to do a rebuttal?
No. I'm gonna ask you to support the Attorney General of Pennsylvania in asking all fifty states to eliminate a statute of limitations on child sexualities for everybody.
For not just priests and, not just the Catholic Church?
Everybody, for everybody, anybody.
Any attorney, sir?
The first man who spoke is an attorney.
If, if we're talking, I have, I really struggle with this, and not because I don't want to find the truth and I don't want people to receive justice, it's just that the statute of limitations is there for a reason, because something that happened thirty years ago, if people are dead, evidence is lost, you can't make a good case. I don't know, that's what I worry about. You know, if we remove the statute of limitations, is the person who's being accused going to receive the measure of justice that he or she deserves as much within our court system? So that's what I struggle with, but I, to be able to say to you definitively, I would agree to it, I can't say that to you right now because I'm still trying to find my way as to what the just thing is for all parties. Because I've been involved with priests who were unjustly accused, but you wouldn't know it. And the last thing I'll say is, the guys, myself and others that are in this room who have been priests prior to two thousand two, we dealt with it in two thousand two, two thousand three, it was awful, but as time went on, things kind of normalized. It's the younger guys right now who are really struggling with it because they're catching it for the first time. So the guys that have been ordained three or four years, they're finding it really hard, in this diocese at least, as far as I know. Let's go here, and then I'll come to the gentleman in the back.
My name is Lilith Gardner. We're parishioners here. I come from several peculiar circumstances, one of which is I'm the father of many, and also the father of many who've been divorced, and more than once some of them. Being a convert from the Russian Orthodox Church, I would like to just simply say something like, I love the Catholic Church, I still love the Orthodox Church. The Orthodox Church does have some interesting aspects. The married priesthood thing, I could talk about that separately, but the divorce part, the way it's handled in the Russian church, in particular, the priest makes the determination.
For one time.
Well.
The Orthodox have a very, very different way, yes, they do have a much more liberal approach in the sense of, more free.
They say, "Look, I know Ivan."
Yes.
That's it.
Yeah.
You can do it three times, I believe.
Right. That's right. But Pope Francis has kind of started towards that and allowing the local bishop now to make determination in certain cases, that the facts of the case are pretty clear and they don't need to go through the long process. It's called the short form now. It was promulgated three years ago, and I've used it a number of times already in this diocese where, doing exactly what you done. It's not handled by the local priest, but he just petitions me, and I do exactly what you did. So, so it doesn't require the long annulment process. It's a no fault, in a sense, it's kind of a no fault to thing. The matter, the matter as to what happened and why it happened is very clear, and the person who's petitioning puts in the petition, the other party is asked, "Do you want to challenge this?" And if they say no, then it's, then I can do it. So it's, it's an easier process. So we're moving towards that, yes, exactly. Gentleman in the back.
Bishop, thank you for being here. I'm Tom D. Tepperhart. I work in the healthcare field, and we need your help, we need your leadership, we need all the skills that you have to communicate, or you're very good one in your, in your office and the diocese, because last week, you know what happened in New York? So-called reproductive health law.
Yeah.
Most dangerous law in the country in terms of abortion rights. And I'm fearful that if the stage is being set in Vermont, they go down that road.
I think we are House Bill fifty-two. Is ours fifty-two or fifty-four?
It's gonna be.
So this is gonna require leadership.
Fifty-seven.
From you and the diocese and all of us to come together with a strategy, because this is orchestrated and we're right there.
It's hard.
And I think, I believe, coming after spending thirty years in New York, that the church is too quiet in terms of what happened.
Sure.
And the comments were all coming after the fact. It's time to have it happen before the fact.
Yeah. I'm very much aware of what's going on legislatively, and we were just having a conversation at supper tonight about this. Father Hugh brought up someone who, someone asked him to communicate to me her concern about exactly what you raised. And I read Bishop Schnaffenberg's letter to the governor and to the people of the Diocese of Albany last week when it came out, and was very strong, very forthright. And I'm, and I'm willing to, and I'm going to put out my own letter here in the diocese of Burlington about these matters. We face a real uphill climb in this diocese. The head of the majority party in the state legislature, which is now a supermajority, is an executive of Planned Parenthood. My legislative. My legislator in Burlington works for Planned Parenthood. And these people never recuse themselves. Whenever voting for funding and Planned Parenthood comes up in the legislature, they don't recuse themselves, which is appalling to me, because that's a breach of protocol and, you know... Compromising. I'm sorry. Okay, right here.
Can I just say, as a woman, will you men stay out of my uterus?
I'm not in your uterus, ma'am. Nor am I looking to be involved in anything like that. I'm not...
Personally, I could prefer having abortion.
Okay.
But I don't think the issue belongs in anybody's legislature.
But I'm not bringing it there.
No. But a woman's health should not...
Okay. You... Okay, as a man, I am more than willing to step aside for women's leadership in this, and there is women's leadership out there. So I hear what... I understand this is a very...
You know what I'm trying to say?
Yes. And I know for me, as a man, to stand up here and talk about things that are very, very painful and personal to women is difficult for many in this room to hear. But there are others who... But there are others, as referenced by Mr. D., and others in the... I'll get one more person in the back. They're looking for leadership. My concern is, we're going so far. We're at a place now where we're going to pass a bill like they did in New York, where a child, right up to the moment of birth, can be aborted. So I don't have anything... I can't say anything to that?
Yes, but the whole... That...
I don't mean to put you on the spot, and I'm sorry, I am.
But that whole issue, why are they... Why is it up for legislature? I mean, it's a woman's health issue.
Then babies. I mean, well, I think, I don't want to push... I wish House Bill 57 didn't show up. I wish it went away. I wish we didn't have to stand up and say these things, but we must. As a Christian community, as a Catholic community, I just think we have to.
Because there are two people involved in abortion.
And so I think it's like we're... I'll go, one more person in the back, and then we'll come over here.
Bishop Coin, I'm very happy you're here, but I will be bringing up the issue of Act 57. Thank you, Tom, for your comments. We're kind of in the 11th hour, because the bill is supposed to come before us, actually, at the end of this week. I guess I will say I was disappointed that nothing was really coming out of the dioceses in past years when we had legislation. Folks do have to understand, this legislation is abortion-on-demand. Late-term, partial birth port abortion across the board, as bad as New York's, if not worse. And we literally are in the 11th hour and have heard nothing. I thought possibly, as in other years, the bishop would have churches across the state talk on a Saturday or Sunday mass and tell their parishioners what was going on. So that quite often, we would have folks calling the State House to, you know, express their wishes or not their wishes for these pieces of legislation. We have heard absolutely nothing.
Okay.
A great disappointment.
Well, I was at the March for Life once Saturday morning. I did speak to these matters at the mass. I marched to... I know what you're saying, that there hasn't been anything...
But it should have gone statewide to every church for at least parishioners, whether they're four or not, or whatever. It's one of our core principal beliefs and our faith, that we kind of decide because it's not what we really want to be talking about. And I probably agree, I wish our legislature wasn't discussing these issues, that we were staying out of these matters and not making them even worse than they are.
Okay. Thank you. Right here.
I just... I'm Carol Salazar. Don't stand. I'm loud.
Well, you better not, because then the camera will...
Camera will knock you out. Knock you out.
Carol Salazar, and I am a medical doctor here in Bennington. And just two things. Number one, as far as I'm concerned and from what I've read, there is never, ever any reason in woman's health to abort a child after 24 weeks. A child's birthed after 24 weeks. They're born. So that's just one thing. But I'm hoping, I agree with what Tom said so much, that the medical community needs guidance. And we had a white mass here last October, and it was wonderful. But I found out in the last couple of years, I joined... I had never... I've been practicing for 40 years. I had never heard, not just here in Vermont, of the Catholic Medical Association. And I discovered it three years ago, and it is amazing. And so I went to a meeting, and there was... I was the only person from Vermont there. Doctors, nurses, and I now know that there are three members in Vermont. And so we're hoping to get together, but I'm hoping to build a guild, because the doctors and nurses need support, and we need to talk to each other about issues and anyway.
Oh, yeah. Well, I have a note taker here, by the way.
I'm just hoping that you'll support us.
So these things aren't going to be lost. I won't forget it.
Hopefully, we will develop an association here.
And this is not an excuse, maybe just to kind of give a sense of the layal land. Carrie Handy, who was our pro-life person, who did a great job, she retired from the position about six months ago, and we just haven't been able to fill it. We've had some applicants apply, but they don't have any qualifications for it in terms of communications and all that. It's just hard to fill that position, because it's a hard position too. And you want to get the right person in there. So I hear you. I hear. I have been lax. I understand that. I didn't realize it was coming up so quickly. But then again, we don't have a lobbyist down there that works for the diocese. We have people who volunteer, but can't... Is it okay if we move on to something?
You've got 10 minutes left.
We've got 10 minutes left here. So let's do this gentleman, then I'll do the gentleman in the back.
I'm Ardo Day, and I was a lawyer. I still am, but that's not why I raised my hand. One of the things that drove me to come tonight was my reaction to the people celebrating over in New York State, the abortion statute there, and then seeing a lot of people who I knew jumping up and down in glee over this Act 57, I think it is. To, you know, a baby in the mother's womb can be murdered. Just get it out into the bassinet, and then it's murder. And my reason for coming was my fear of this. And the other thing that exacerbates that fear really is the casual mention tonight of the statute of limitations, you know, in abolishing the statute of limitations as far as sexual crimes by priests or people in the church are concerned. And what it is basically is it's throwing out the baby with the bathwater. I mean, the concept of a statute of limitations is just as sacred in America as the presumption of innocence. That's why it's there. It's there to provide everybody with fairness and with a fair trial and to make sure, horror of horrors, that a guilty person isn't... that an innocent person isn't found guilty. And my urge... And I'm so impressed, Bishop, with your presentation tonight and everything that you're doing and that the church is doing, and it inspires me to get up and get more active and work with you and everyone else to address all of these issues. But the fear that I have is that we fail to stand tall because of this overwhelming barrage that we've had, particularly with the sexual scandals. And I do think we've been too silent with Act 57 and with the... Think of Mario Koma, what, 40 years ago? You know, at the University of Notre Dame, making a speech about what he believes as far as abortion is concerned, and then there's his son cheering up and down that we're going to have it. So the reason I rise is to thank you for what you're doing, to tell you how encouraged I am by having been here tonight, and to urge you to continue to stand tall on behalf of the Church of Christ.
Thank you. I've been... I think my main point is, we're here to stay as Catholics. We're not going away. We should be recognized that, not just the priests, all of us, that we have a value to bring to the community here. And there are people who disagree with us and disagree with our own communion on positions that we hold, but that we still have... We are a people of the common good. We're not just a cult of Christians that live out and apart from. We are immersed in the community, and we do good things in so many ways. And that we should not be afraid to say that, and we should not be hesitant to be a part of the public dialogue in it, regardless of whether people want to hear it or not. So that's what I say. Gentlemen in the back, I'll be the last one.
Your Excellency, I want to thank you for coming here. I was very impressed with your communication regarding a bunch of sensitive topics. So my question was regarding the availability of traditional Latin Mass in the entire state of Vermont. You see, I brought my family here, one, two, and three in a few months, and there's a... I'm not the only young... We're not the only young family in the area, and I know that I'm not the only one who's traditionally minded. I think the church seemed to have gone along with the kind of wider world out there as far as modernism. I'm not sure if it's really working. We seem to be hemorrhaging young people. I seem to be one of the younger ones here. So my question is, are there any plans for a traditional Latin Mass in the entire state of Vermont?
Well, we have one. I mean, just, let me just... We have a Latin Mass parish in Burlington, which doesn't help you down here.
There's a mass in Troy.
But there is a mass across the border in New Hampshire.
Troy, New York, right near Albany.
So I'm not saying go elsewhere. I am open to the extraordinary form community forming and having it in different places throughout the state. It's... I have a doctorate in liturgy. I studied all of the Latin Mass, the Missiles and everything like that. I understand the rich tradition of it. I see it. Pope Benedict said it is a valid celebration of the Church. Those people that want to come together as a community and want it should be given it. It's more finding that, what's the point, you know, 20 to 25 people that would be consistently going to that? And then finding a priest that's available to do it is a more difficult thing. We have some younger men who are formed in the extraordinary form as well as the northern form, but they're not... They haven't been out long enough to be on their own yet. But Father Brian O'Donnell does do it. He has Mass every Sunday at 10 o'clock at St. Anthony's Church in Burlington. He has a daily Mass, and he does all the sacraments in Latin as well. And I support him in that for the reasons that you said. I think it's a legitimate form of the Church's liturgy, and so therefore it should be available to those that seek it. I don't... If, as it goes forward, if you could find like-minded people here that can form that community, that, you know, that you would be able to sustain and support a priest, that's the hardest thing in that ministry, then I would be open to it. I'm sorry, I really, I'm not opposed to it at all.
I got some homework then.
I'm not trying to peel this back on you. In the meantime, Troy, New York's right...
Right, yeah.
And I don't want to say, "Well, you can just go to Troy." If you find a community, I'll get you... I'll get you some... There's guys out there that'll do it. In fact, one's waiting to do it. I said, "Well, you haven't even been ordained a year." Give me a little bit of time, and you will do it.
Bishop, I have one last thing that I didn't mention before. The only possibility this piece of legislation will not move forward this week, we have requested a public hearing. So maybe there is a window of opportunity for folks to be heard, but I would say it needs to be sooner than later.
Right. Okay. And when I was a parish priest in Boston, when these issues came up, I was always aware of the necessity of being careful about talking about these issues in a church filled with kids and families. So I often use the Bulletin as a place where I would put concerns that were being raised. Or I would talk very kind of high level about it. And I'd say, "There's a bill that's coming up before our legislation regarding the issue of women's reproductive rights. I think you all know what I'm talking about. There's... It's in the Bulletin. Please take a look at it and see what's there. There's also some stuff available as you go out. I'd like you to do that." But I always felt uncomfortable... How do you talk about these very sensitive issues with families and children on a Sunday in front of you? I just... That's what I struggle with as a pastor. And I know, I know, maybe this is... Maybe then, because this is such an important issue, maybe you have to deal with that and be willing and let parents deal with it. But that's where I... I'm not dodging it. I'm always very strong on it, but I was always careful about how I talked about it and the way I talked about it. Mr. D., one more. Okay.
Just thinking about how uncomfortable staff, staff members, you know, would be being required to participate in the next procedure.
Oh, yeah. Oh, I know, and Vermont, and you know what? UVM, they just snuck that into the thing. And they have an opt-out, but the opt-out says, "Only if you can get someone to replace you." So it's not an opt-out. And so, okay, we talked about some really hard issues and sensitive issues, and I thank everyone who spoke, whether you agree with me or not, because I think we need to listen to each other and hear each other, because there is such layers within our community, especially around some of these really volatile issues. I just want to say to you that I'm doing everything that as your bishop and your pastor, that I thank our priests, and the priest in the back, even though he's not our priest. It's Albany, but I thank him for being a priest, and others for their holy work, and all of you for your faithful Catholic witness. And as someone, every day, priests and religious and others pray the office, the morning prayer, evening prayer, and other hours. And we begin with, often begin with Psalm 95, where we say, "If today you hear his voice, if today you hear his voice." And it says, "Heart, not your hearts, but if today..." There's more to it. "If today you hear..." And I always say to my priests, it can be so discouraging and others to not, to think about the global or the large picture. The most important thing is to focus on today and focus on that person in front of you when you're doing ministry. And if you make one person's life different, and you bring one person back to the church today, or you plant one seed today, then that's a good thing. Because each day, it'll just build bigger and bigger. So don't stop doing the good things. As St. Paul said, always... I'll say to St. Paul, I'll do one. St. Paul said, "Say only the good things that men and women need to hear, things that will really lift them up." But then in 1 Peter, we read, "Always be ready to give a reason for your hope." Always be ready to give a reason for your hope. And I have a lot of reasons for my hope. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Bishop. I've been ordained 41 years. I've never heard a bishop being this open and this honest and be willing to share some very important issues with this community. So thanks again, Bishop.
The Lord be with you. May Almighty God bless you, Father, Son, and Holy Spirit.
Amen.
Go in peace. Get off of Route 7. I'm heading north.
He's got two and a half hours on the road.